Forum. Any discussion on the agenda?
Make a motion, will you approve the agenda submitted?
Ken made a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
A second.
This guy, Lynn. Second. Second of the motion, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any ceremonies, recognitions, proclamations, or memorials?
You skipped minutes.
No. Oh, yeah, it skipped minutes. Yes, we have minutes from the December twenty first regular meeting and the January fifth special meeting. Wes distributed those. Any comments or additions or corrections to the minutes? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Make a motion, will you approve the minutes for twenty one December and five January?
Ken made a motion to approve the minutes from the two meetings. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Now, ceremonials, recognitions, proclamations, and memorials. Hearing that, we'll move on to reports. I put together a state of the city report that I guess I would like to read into the record. It shouldn't take too long, and then we'll post it as the mayor's message on the website. January twenty second, State of the City Report and Twenty Twenty Objectives for the City of Holiday Island. As could be expected, the first year of operation for the newly created city of Holiday Island, some things went as planned and some did not. But in the end, the city was in a healthy financial position with a clearer perspective of what can be accomplished going forward. The primary objectives of incorporating as a city were to return revenue from taxes already being paid by the residents and property owners of Holiday Island to Holiday Island, to assist High-Sid in road maintenance and operation of the fire department, thereby reducing some of the financial pressure on the district, to assume responsibility for police protection, to establish code enforcement capability, and to initiate some activity relative to economic development. The following summarizes what was accomplished relative to those goals. Financial, under the general fund. The distribution of funds from the state for the general fund were delayed by three months due to the Census Bureau not being able to provide a population estimate for the city. In order to prevent losing possibly an entire year of revenue, the city requested and got passed a change to the law making it possible for Arkansas Geographical Information Service to provide that estimate. The majority of the general revenue funds distributed by the state come from the city's share of the Carroll County sales tax. The sales tax ran significantly ahead of forecast. Consequently, in spite of the fact that the city lost out on three months of revenue, total revenue still came in at ninety-two percent of budget. The general fund expenditures were significantly below budget, allowing the city to establish a seventy-five thousand dollar operating reserve. Financial, street fund and roads. The street fund was similarly impacted by the three-month delay. Fuel tax and the one-half percent sales tax for roads ran slightly ahead of budget each month when revenue was received. Consequently, also in spite of losing three months of revenue, total street fund revenue still came in at eight-three percent of budget. Since the suburban improvement district suspended road paving for twenty twenty-one, and since the city and the district needed to establish a basis for an interlocal agreement on road resurfacing and maintenance, the street fund revenue will be held in the street fund to be used for the city's portion of a six-hundred-and-seven-thousand-dollar paving program in twenty twenty-two, three hundred thousand of which will be funded through the state grant. The point needs to be stressed that this is six-hundred-and-seven-thousand in road resurfacing that property owners in Holiday Island, property owners in Holiday Island will not have to pay for out of future assessments of new taxes. Also during twenty twenty-one, the city maintained that if it was due half of the three mil property tax that the county levies, I'm having a hard time seeing in the dark here, that the county levies for road maintenance. In spite of our having several legal opinions as well as an attorney general opinion, the county did not agree. Thank you. Fortunately, we were able to convince them in December that we were correct, so we will be receiving those funds in February along with monthly payments for taxes collected this year. Buildings and construction. The city council passed an ordinance establishing a building code and building and construction department for the city. Starting on January first, twenty twenty-two, the city will be responsible for reviewing all applications for building permits, issuing those permits, and doing the necessary follow-up inspections to assure compliance to the code. The city is currently seeking applications for a building inspector. Under planning and zoning, the city council passed an ordinance establishing a planning and zoning commission for the city. At this point, as allowed by law, the city council is the planning commission with the mayor as chair. In time, possibly in twenty twenty-two, a separate slate of commissioners will be appointed as the planning commission. To date, the planning commission has adopted an area planning map, a land use plan, a master street map, and adopted the zoning requirements integral to the declaration of reservations as the interim city zoning requirement. In twenty twenty-two, a much more comprehensive zoning ordinances will be passed, and a board of adjustment will be established to hear appeals for variances to the zoning ordinances. The combined planning and zoning commission and building and construction department have replaced the former planning commission that had worked on behalf of the developer over the years. Code enforcement, health and sanitation. A top priority for twenty twenty-two will be to pass ordinances regulating health, safety, sanitation, and the general welfare of residents in Holiday Island. This will encompass a wide variety of areas, including illegal dumping, trash pickup, illegal burning, maintenance of structures relative to health and safety, vegetation control, and others. This will address some, but not all, of the issues historically associated with violations of the unit covenants. It is important to point out, though, that the city will not be the defenders of the covenants. The unit declarations of reservations, commonly called the unit covenants, are private contractors, contracts between the property owners, and the city as such has no right nor responsibility to enforce them. The city is currently seeking applications for a code enforcement officer. Fire department. The city and High-Sid have an interlocal agreement to provide fire protection and EMS services to the city. High-Sid continues to operate the fire department with financial support from the city. Policing and the sheriff's contract. The city and High-Sid had discussions during the year relative to the city taking over the sheriff's contract. The discussion centered more on the need for a second deputy since one deputy can only cover approximately twenty-five percent of the total hours in a week, and more importantly, has no backup in potentially dangerous situations. And although Holiday Island remains a safe place to live, unfortunately, we do have dangerous situations here from time to time. We were not able to put the plan together for a second deputy before the end of the year. Consequently, High-Sid renewed their contract with the sheriff for twenty twenty-two. We are continuing to work on a long-range plan to establish a police department that would be staffed with two deputies provided through the interlocal agreement between the city, the county, and High-Sid. We would hope to have that in place in the first half of twenty twenty-two. Once this is in place, the city will enter into an interlocal agreement with Eureka Springs to prosecute our cases in the Eureka Springs District Court. This will save Holiday Island a considerable amount of money each year. Under economic development, the city council passed a resolution allowing the mayor to establish an economic development task force due to time demands and other priorities that did not happen. However, we were able to apply for two grants, both impacting our potential for high-speed broadband internet access for all residents in Holiday Island. Currently, there are pockets involving hundreds of people where cable is not available without paying the provider many thousands of dollars to run the cable. We are monitoring the status of those grants. Summary. This report covers the highlights of twenty twenty-one, but in no way does justice to the volume of work done by a group of city officials who are volunteering their time and talent. I didn't even touch on all the work done just to allow us to conduct business. Everything from setting up bank accounts to having phones and internet, having a website and an office to call our home, all being done with careful attention to the laws under which we must operate. I encourage everyone to visit our website at www.cityofholidayisland.com and scan the ordinances and resolutions that have been researched and adopted for the benefit of the city. Looking forward to a great twenty twenty-two. Submitted in keys, Mayor of Holiday Island. Again, I can't, you know, express enough my thanks for all the work that everybody did last year and continues to do into this year. I know what the majority of, I know the majority of the community appreciates it, but I can't imagine that they understand or comprehend the volume of work that's being done, so. But it'll all pay off. All right. Moving on then. Planning Commission, Lynn, want to give us an update?
At our last meeting, we finished the second pass through the ordinance or the regulations we've been considering. That second pass then includes all the edits that we had suggested and made some good plans for what we need to do before the eighteenth, or excuse me, the twenty-fifth we meet again to go through some more specific detail that's really down to the nuts and bolts of what zoning is all about. In that session, we'll be looking at what's allowed for use in each zone that we've created. Because the covenants lack that kind of information. They have some uses permitted for commercial areas but not in residential, so that'll be new to Holiday Island, but it won't be unlike what other communities have. The task is huge, but we're gonna get it, get it done. Yeah, the meeting is next Tuesday on the twenty-fifth at one P M, I believe.
Okay. Yeah, the more we get into the issuing of building permits, the more keenly aware I am becoming of the need to have these zoning ordinances in place. For the most part, the, you know, if somebody owns a lot and they want to build a house on their lot, that's pretty straightforward. But there's commercial construction, there's ongoing activity up in the park. And, you know, initially, the developer was doing all of the, you know, the plot plan development, filing those plot plans with the county and things like that. And to some degree, it followed the convention that Holiday Island has had over the years of identifying property by unit, block, lot, and, yeah, unit, block, and lot. We're losing control of that because of all of the unplotted parcels that have been sold off. They're being subdivided and having houses put on them or being developed for commercial purposes without the benefit of having a small but still necessary development, developer plan for that parcel. And so we're losing control of our, our unit, block, lot designation for all the properties. We're having properties identified now as, you know, parcel such and such, Lot One, or parcel such, Lot Two, or parcel such and such, Lot P T Two, or something like that, you know, it's just that. And so, we, we need to get this done. We need to get the message out to all property owners because it impacts property owners more so than residents. Because you can be a resident without being a property owner. We need to get a message out to all the property owners that they cannot, cannot start any work without having a plot plan with what they're proposing to build on that plot plan. And if it's a large parcel as opposed to an already plotted lot, then we need a development plan for that parcel that fully defines what's going to happen on that piece of property so that we can properly assign unit, block, lot numbers and get it plotted and get the plot recorded properly. We can't do that fast enough.
Dan, do we have a way of knowing when parcels sell and whom they're being sold to?
No.
What about the district getting information when the changes?
Maybe. Although I'm not sure if, you know, if, if it's an unplotted parcel, there's probably no assessment assigned to it. I don't know, I don't know your, the answer to it. I was thinking about that, Zad Kamun, that somehow we need to tie the district into this zoning thing, too. They need to be a party to anything that's being done as far as parcel development because they're gonna be impacted by whatever infrastructure they may be required to provide. They may be impacted by how, by their ability to assess that property going forward and stuff like that, so.
Another question I had was, are you talking about parcels that have been sold this past year, twenty twenty-one, or some parcels that were sold prior to that time as well?
I think the little bit of exploring I've done on data scout, I've seen parcels going back as far as twenty seventeen.
Yeah, because I was thinking the same thing, that some of those things that you cited may have been before twenty twenty-one even. And, I mean, we didn't have any control until just recently when we started, we've got that together here.
When, when, you know, the, the parcels and when they were, when Tom was doing the developing, then he would bring a clap with that property, showing the lots and everything. And then the Sid accepted that, and they had a record of it, but right now you got nothing.
Right. And we have, we have streets up in the, up in the park that have never been dedicated to the district or the city as far as anybody knows. However, there are utilities, there's sewer and water and stuff running along and maybe under those streets. And so, it's, you know, we, we got our work cut out for us trying to get it all straightened out so that we have a path going forward. With that said, as far as communicating it, you know, I said the sooner the better, but I did ask the district if we would be, if it would be okay if we would include a, some form of communication in with the assessment bills. That's the best way to get a message in the hands of every property owner and without hopefully costing any additional postage. It doesn't have to be a three-page letter, it can probably be a third of a page or something so that it fits in the envelope. And they said that that would be fine as long as we help stuff envelopes. So, come the last week of February, might need to get your little finger-wetter things on.
You get a sponge.
Okay, well, thanks Lynn, you continue to put a lot of effort into that, and there's still a lot to do, but at least we're heading in the right direction.
May I have a look for one second?
Sure.
I have somebody that wants to get in on Zoom, and I, I found the meeting ID, but I don't know the password.
Let me look.
It might be in the meeting.
Would it be in the?
It might be.
On the agenda, it has like a thirty-four.
Password is five zero one six nine eight.
Okay, moving on.
I, I got it wrong, excuse me, I read the wrong number. Let me do that again. Passcode is six eight eight two seven two. Sorry.
Eight five three eight four two seven seven two seven.
That's it.
Okay, moving on to the broadband grant, any update on that?
Uh, no, it's just, we could hear any minute on the first grant. The second one, we were told that it would be May or June.
Okay. All right, we're just waiting across our fingers. There are no special.
And we still have people that are doing the test, so, I mean, if at some point they look at updated map, it's gonna continue to show those lack of the adequate.
Maybe it'll get cops' attention, but they're getting a lot of bad press here. All right. No special committees, financials, Wes distributed the.
On special committees? Are, we are gonna have an economic development council for the city, I guess? I guess that's a special committee. And.
We, we need to call it a task force.
Whatever.
But if it's a council, it would, it'd have to have public meeting.
Don't you think it should be public meeting?
We, we can refer back to the resolution we passed, whatever we called it in that resolution.
On the advice of Justin, it was to call it a task force.
Whatever. When are we gonna start having that? I mean, are you gonna appoint people sometime soon? Do you have a plan for possible, you know, point in the future when it might happen?
And I didn't make, I did not make a commitment in my.
No, you didn't.
You did, it's the planning commission, maybe, because I said you were gonna put it on the front burner and get.
Is that in the, that in the minutes?
Or was that the workshop?
That's in my.
Or was that the workshop where we were talking about?
That was a workshop, I'm sorry, it was a workshop.
Yeah. And he said front burner?
Yeah.
Jerry, you've got a list of ten names for him to consider?
I did at one point give you some.
Okay.
Names.
Just curious.
I, I switch pans on the front burner about every hour, all day long. But yes.
Maybe in the first quarter sometime?
Yeah. I, we, we need to, we need to get going on it, but I, I don't want to, I don't want to get people's expectations up too high because we have very little limited resources to actually work on economic development. You know, you know, you take a city like Berryville, you know, Berryville probably, the city probably owns, you know, fifty acres of land or something that they can, you know, use to entice somebody to come in and.
If you get the right ten people that have some innovative ideas and some contacts, I mean, there are things you can do that won't cost thousands of dollars, you know, I mean.
My, you know, the, the first thing I would ask the economic development task force to take a stab at is to try to put on paper what we want to be when we grow up so that we're not out just chasing rabbits, you know? It doesn't do us any good to chase after grants for, you know, a manufacturing plant because we have no place to put one.
Well, if, if we go back to the resolution, then it's basically what it states, that their first task would be to kind of determine its mission and set short and long-term strategies and determine what's the most important, so.
And one, you know, one strategy may be to, you know, identify some property that, that we want to somehow secure so that we have the ability to develop it someday. So, yes, it will get some attention as soon as we get a building inspector.
First things first.
All right, can we move on to financials? Wes distributed the financials. Wes, you have any comments you want to make?
No, I don't think so. I think everything was pretty much set out there. We ended the year with two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars in our accounts. And of course, that was all, we started with zero.
No, we started with a hundred dollars, I think.
Well.
It's not whose side of the donation.
They were zero, right, and then there was donations.
We contributed a little bit more after that.
You know, and there were thirty-four hundred dollars worth of donations received.
There you go.
And that got us started. And then since that, for the rest of the year, everything was turnback funds from the state and our share of the county sales tax. And we did, you know, and in December, we paid the district forty-six thousand dollars on the fire contract.
As, you know, per the budget?
Right, as per budget.
Those shots in the arm for them at the end of the year?
Make a motion, will you accept the financial statements in that?
What was that?
Ken made a motion that we had settled the financials as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry made, Jerry seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We can get them posted unless we've already done that.
I haven't posted them, I just stuck them in the meeting notes.
Because there's no other place on the agenda for, you know, to bring this up. or to ask you this question, Wes. Have you, did you get a chance to call Eureka Springs to see if they got their January property back?
Yes, I did. I left a voicemail yesterday and I have not had a response.
Is a gang order in place in Eureka Springs?
Today was a pathology.
I don't know.
They put in a mask order.
I would imagine they're busy, so. Okay, no old business, moving on to new business. The municipal league pointed out, I think Lynn pointed out, and it was in this magazine, pointed out to us that there is a requirement under Arkansas Code ACA fourteen forty-three five oh one, that the governing body get together at the beginning of the year and get themselves organized. And I asked Tim McKinney, um, the mayor for thirty-two years of Berryville, Arkansas, what they do, and he said, they've never done anything. So.
It doesn't make it right.
He's president.
No, but I'll bet it makes it typical.
Okay.
So why, why do we need to make it right? I don't know, do we have to break around the table?
Hopefully both can find their chair.
What I, what I would, you know, we, we passed a series of resolutions at the beginning of last year that did exactly what the, we were aware of this last year, and we did this by passing a whole series of resolutions to get, to get ourselves organized. I think we can satisfy the requirements of the law simply by having the council reaffirm that those resolutions are still appropriate. So someone wanted to make such a motion, um, I think that, that would.
Well, I'll make that a motion as long as I don't have to cite the numbers of all those resolutions.
No, I don't think we need to.
Well, I, I move that we reaffirm the, uh, uh, resolutions that we started the journey with back in January twenty twenty-one.
I'll second.
There we have a motion, a motion to reaffirm the resolutions passed last year in January. Well, I don't want to say in January, it might not have been in January, but the resolutions passed to get the city organized last year. Any discussion?
Who, who made that motion?
Jerry made the motion and Lynn seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'd be organizing. Okay, moving on, ordinance twenty twenty, the next thing on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one, establishing salaries for elected officials. This is something that we can't just reaffirm the one we did last year because there was an expiration date on it. And this is something that needs to be done every year because there will be, at some points in time, changes in salaries and changes in personnel. So, um, Wes, are your eyes good enough to read this ordinance?
I think so. Ordinance two thousand twenty-two zero zero one, an ordinance establishing salaries for elected officials and employees and assigning municipal property to elected officials and employees of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Whereas a method must be established by which salaries are set by the city of Holiday Island, and whereas employees and elected officials of the city of Holiday Island may from time to time be assigned municipal property for use in the conduct of their job, not be ordained by the city council at the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that salaries for employees affected one one twenty-two, all city of Holiday Island personnel's salaries, wages shall be fixed by the mayor and presented to the city council as part of the annual budget, which may be amended from time to time. A schedule of current salaries will be kept on file with the recorder treasurer and available for public inspection. Salaries of elected officials affected for the year beginning one one of twenty-two and ending December thirty-one of twenty-two, the mayor, recorder treasurer, and city council members of the city of Holiday Island will be compensated at the following rates. Mayor, the mayor, zero dollars annually. City council members, zero dollars annually. The recorder treasurer, two thousand four hundred dollars monthly. City property, the city department head or supervisor shall be required to get a signed receipt listing all such property from any person provided with or furnished with any type of property. The receipt, the receipt shall be filed in the city office with the recorder treasurer. In the event of death, termination, or resignation, and the agent, employee, or officer has, has wages, approved sick time, vacation, paid leave of absence, or any other items due him or her from the city, the city office shall note by said individual of writing of the amount owed and simultaneously request said individual to return any and all property supplied or furnished by the city. See, if the individual has lost, misplaced, or otherwise disposed of said property, the city will be paid in full by the individual as executor or administrator, or administrator. In the event of depreciable property, the city shall receive the depreciated value. The city may withhold from wages, approved sick time, vacation, paid leave of absence, or other sums held by the city, the value of the property not returned at the time of death, termination, or resignation, passed and approved by the city council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of one eighteen two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this ordinance, after which we'll open it up for discussion.
I'll move that we, I'm sorry, pass the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash one, establishing salaries for city officials.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? So Lynn made the motion, Ken seconded it. Any discussion? Roll call vote? Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood, absent. Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All, all present members in favor, Mr. Mayor? Okay, I, that ordinance passes, and I guess for the record, I can state that this is basically exactly what we did last year, so that ten percent increase for the mayor salary has disappeared in this ordinance.
Ten percent of zeros, zeros.
All right, you want?
Yeah, I had a comment, um, when I was reading this, it made me think, are we maintaining a list of all of our assets, equipment assets? We need one.
That has not been prepared yet.
I think we should do one.
I have a record of all of that.
And then, then both of you and anyone else who subsequently gets assigned stuff need to have an individual list, so I think we need to do that.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two, establishing a board of adjustment. Wes, can we read that one?
Ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero zero two, and ordinance establishing this, the Holiday Island Board of Adjustment and declaring an emergency.
Oh, wait, wait, before we go on, wait, I made an error of omission here. Uh, we need to go back to the prior ordinance that had an emergency clause. We need a, we need to vote on the emergency clause. Can I have a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
There's no emergency clause, huh?
There isn't?
Yeah. I don't remember seeing one.
I'll never blame them.
Yeah, it's one on the board of adjustment, but not on the.
Board of Adjustment, yeah.
Okay, I thought the title, it said it was declaring an emergency.
It was, but there's no section that declares emergency, the reason why it's an emergency. We need to have that when we have ordinances with that purpose on them.
Is there any way to fix it?
We've already passed it. Because, well, the only issue would be the secretary of treasurer draws a monthly salary, and if this takes ninety days to go into effect without a valid clause, I don't know if that's causing problems or not.
Could we amend the.
We made the, obviously we made the savings page last year because I copied this directly from last year and just changed the dates.
Well, we could vote to bring it back to the floor and, and amend it. Couldn't we do that?
That's what I was wanting to bring it back.
You what?
Bring it back and vote to add the emergency clause.
Correct. First, you have to vote to bring it back to the floor, and then somebody would have to amend them of the statute. Ordinance to include an emergency clause.
Yep.
You want to make that motion?
I'll make that one.
Jerry is making a motion to bring ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one back to the floor to add an emergency clause provision. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ken seconded it. I suppose we should do a roll call vote on this. Okay, councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All members present in favor, Mr. Mayor? Okay, the ordinance is back on the table for, I guess, modification to add an emergency clause statement.
No, we voted, we voted to bring it back on the floor, so I'll move that we add the emergency clause, amend the ordinance to include the emergency clause.
Jerry made a motion to amend the ordinance to add the emergency clause. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion?
Do we need to put the verbiage on it before we vote on it?
Um, yes.
Be it further ordained that the city requirement to set wages annually, the need is media, to adopt the regulation or adopt the ordinance, shall be enforced and effective immediately upon passage?
Do you need the phrase, that then the emergency hereby, hereby declared to exist, maybe?
Send my.
I'm writing for those listening on Zoom. Okay, let me read my version of what you said. Be it further ordained that since wages must be paid starting in January, that an emergency is declared to exist.
And the ordinance shall be enforced and effective immediately upon passage? That's typical to most of them. And this ordinance.
Next one said.
Shall be enforced. And effective immediately upon passage.
Okay, let me read the whole statement again. Be it further ordained that since wages must be paid starting in January, that emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be effective immediately and enforced upon passage. With that wording, do I have a motion to accept?
We have a motion already on the floor that's been first and seconded to adopt the emergency clause.
Adopt.
To adopt that language.
Motion was made by Pittman and seconded by Mills.
Okay, roll call vote? Okay, councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? All right.
I move that we accept the emergency clause for this ordinance.
Then made a motion to accept the emergency clause?
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? An emergency clause does require a roll call vote, so we're gonna do this again. It was Lynn and Jerry.
Yes.
Okay, councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? Okay, we again pass the ordinance as amended. And thank you, Jerry, for coming up with a Robert's Rules of Order appropriate way to get me out of a pinch. All right, moving on to, uh.
Now, okay, so do we still need to approve the motion then?
No.
Not approve the ordinance?
We did, we did.
Because we approved the emergency clause.
We approved, we approved an amendment to the ordinance.
We already approved the ordinance.
Yeah.
I think.
But then we brought, the motion was to return it to the floor.
Right.
For the purposes of.
So do we need to vote again on the ordinance?
Okay.
Let's do it. I move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero one as amended.
I'll second.
All right, Lynn made, I'm right, we're, we're hanging on there. Lynn made a motion to, to adopt the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one as amended, and Linda seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I don't know if that was supposed to be a roll call vote. It was probably supposed to be a roll call vote, so we're gonna do this one more time. Okay, councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? Okay.
Illegal.
Are we done now?
We're legal, this is done.
All so that we pay ourselves nothing.
We could, we could have amended it to, uh, give ourselves a fifty percent raise if we made it through there.
All right.
Somebody would let you know about it.
The next thing on the agenda is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two, which is probably gonna be correct because Lynn drafted this one.
I'd be willing to read it.
All right, Lynn, you want to read it?
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash two, an ordinance establishing the Holiday Island Board of Adjustment and declaring an emergency. Whereas Arkansas Municipal Planning Statute ACA fourteen fifty-six four sixteen requires that the city of Holiday Island shall establish a zoning board of adjustment to hear zoning appeals from the decisions of administrative officials, and whereas pursuant to ACA. from the decisions of administrative officials, and whereas pursuant to ACA fourteen fifty-six four oh four A two, the City Council may elect to serve as a zoning board of adjustment by which it was initially addressed in ordinance twenty-one, excuse me, twenty twenty-one dash two, with members being appointed by ordinance twenty twenty-one dash six. And whereas after due consideration, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has approved by resolution HICPC R twenty-two dash one, establishing the Holiday Island Board of Adjustment or Board of Adjustment, including the recommendation that the Board of Adjustment be composed of three members, appointed by the mayor and approved by the City Council. And whereas the Board of Adjustment has not yet made, met a first time to organize, it is in desire of the City Council that said Board of Adjustment be formally organized by a new ordinance. And whereas an emergency exists in order to be prepared to accommodate various appeals. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, A, that ordinance twenty twenty-one dash six, section two, the city zoning board of adjustment members determined, shall be rescinded without affecting the balance of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash six. B, that the Holiday Island Board of Adjustment pursuant to ACA fourteen fifty-six four sixteen B one and following shall be established, organized, and in the powers and duties defined to replace the prior named zoning board of adjustment. C, that the regulations below entitled Holiday Island Board of Adjustment be hereby approved and adopted. D, the city recorder treasurer shall maintain two signed copies and a digital image for public inspection. Section one, the title, Holiday Island Board of Adjustment. Section two, the creation and appointment. The Holiday Island Board of Adjustment is hereby established, which shall be composed of three members appointed by the mayor and approved by the City Council. Section three, organization. The Board of Adjustment shall adopt rules necessary to the conduct of its affairs in keeping with the provisions of these regulations. Meetings shall be held on a regular schedule and at such other times as the Board of Adjustment may determine. All meetings shall be open to the public. The Board of Adjustment shall keep minutes of its votes indicating such fact and shall keep records of its examinations and other official actions, all of which shall be in public record. A quorum of the Board of Adjustment shall consist of all three members. The concurring vote of a majority of the total Board of Adjustment members shall be necessary to revise any order or decision of the building inspector or to decide on any matter upon which it is required to pass. The building inspector shall attend each meeting of the Board of Adjustment and shall bring all plans, specifications, plaits, and papers related to any case before the Board of Adjustment for determination. Section four, powers and duties. The Board of Adjustment shall have the powers and duties prescribed by law and these regulations, which are more particularly described as follows. A, administrative review. To hear and decide appeals where it is alleged that there is an error in any order, requirement, decision, or determination made by the building inspector in the enforcement of these regulations, the Board of Adjustment may affirm or reverse in whole or in part such said decision of the building inspector. B, to authorize upon appeal in specific cases such variance from the terms of this zoning chapter as will not be contrary to the public interest where owing to special conditions, a literal enforcement of the provisions of these regulations would result in unnecessary hardship that would deprive the owner of any reasonable use of the land or building involved. A variance from the terms of these zoning regulations shall not be granted by the Board of Adjustment unless and until, one, the applicant demonstrates that special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or building involved, and which are not applicable to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. That literal interpretation of the provisions of these regulations would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of these regulations. That special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant, and that granting the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is de, denied by the zoning regulations to other land, structures, or buildings in the same district. Number two, no nonconforming use of neighboring land, structures, or buildings in the same district, and no permitted or nonconforming use of land, structures, or buildings in other districts shall be considered grounds for the issuance of the variance. Number three, the Board of Adjustment shall further make a finding that the reasons set forth in the application justify the granting of the variance, and the variance is the minimum variance that will make it possible the reasonable use of land, building, or structure. Four, the Board of Adjustment shall further make a finding that the granting of the variance will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of these zoning regulations and will not be injurious to the neighborhood or others detrimental to the public affair, otherwise detrimental to the public affair. Number five, in granting any variance, the Board of Adjustment may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards that it deems necessary or desirable. Any prescribed conditions or safeguards for granting any variance shall become part of the approved building permit. Violations of such conditions and safeguards when made a part of the terms under which the variance is granted shall be deemed a violation of these regulations. Six, under no circumstances shall the Board of Adjustment grant the variance to allow or use not permissible under the terms of these zoning regulations in the district involved or any use expressly or by implication prohibited by the terms of these regulations in said district. Section C, special exceptions. In addition to the powers and duties specified above, the Board of Adjustment shall also have the following powers and duties to hold public meetings and decide the following exceptions. One, interpret zoning district boundaries upon appeal of the building inspector's determination and where uncertainty exists as to the boundaries of the zoning district or when the street or property lines existing on the ground are in variance with those shown on the zoning district map. Two, determine the amount of parking required for use not listed herein. And three, vary the parking regulations by not more than twenty-five percent, which has conclusively shown that the specific use of the building would make unnecessary departments based as otherwise required by these regulations. Section five, appeals. Appeals from the decisions of the Board of Justice shall be first heard by the City Council of Holiday Island in a public hearing. And finally, in section six, the emergency clause, be it further ordained that due to the requirement that the city have a Board of Adjustment to hear zoning appeals and the need to adopt these regulations as immediate, that an emergency is hereby declared to exist, that this ordinance shall be enforced and effective immediately upon passage. Pass and approve the state.
Okay, there's a lot of stuff there, um, for both of us that have been sitting in on the planning commission meetings all these months. This should make pretty good sense to us.
Yeah, we went over that work session.
We, yeah, we went over it in the planning commission meeting, so. Um, I will entertain a motion at this time to approve or to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two.
Do we need to wait the second reading?
Um, we.
Where the clerk is resting.
Okay, so we do, okay.
I had that situation.
Make a motion, we have approved ordinance twenty twenty-two dash zero zero two.
I'll second.
Ken made the motion, Linda seconded it. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to point out that from our planning commission recommendation, uh, this document is a little bit different from what we sent to the city, and it's our privilege as a city council to change whatever's recommended. The, the changes were in the fact that it's three members in section two, and, uh, we decided that, uh, there would be a language that was in there for a different sized group that was stripped in from section three. And then, I don't remember for sure where it's at, but there was a concern about when and if the Board of Adjustment does put conditions, um, on the, uh, the applicant, that they be made a part of the building permit, though that was added in section five. So that sentence, any prescribed conditions or safeguards for granting any variance shall become part of the approved building permit. So I got that text added into this ordinance.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the ordinance passes, and since the ordinance has an emergency clause, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the emergency clause.
I'll move that the emergency clause be adopted for twenty twenty-two dash two.
Lynn made the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Linda made, uh, seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, the emergency clause passes and, uh, um, the next step in the process would be for me to recommend three appointees to the, uh, to the City Council, and hopefully I'll be able to do that by our next meeting. Okay.
Well, these people that are appointed, uh, to the Board of Adjustment seems like they're going to have to be very familiar with the zoning map, the zoning codes.
Be most helpful.
No, I think, uh, the learning process will come if an appeal comes, and then the, the evidence or the, uh, the proposal will bring forth what does it need to know.
Okay, and then they could see what's in the documents that we've passed.
Right, that apply to, uh, the reason why the building inspector, uh, said no to their request.
And the, um, members of the former planning commission would be excellent members on this Board of Adjustment, at least one, one expert.
But it's not a fly-by-and-see-of-your-pants type of deal. I mean, they have to be familiar with the codes they're passed.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, um.
Are you going to review the health regulation? Do we want to do that before we do the road project and then?
Well, let, let me, uh, let me bring it up. The next thing on the agenda is reviewing the health and sanitation regulation. Um, Lynn sent me a bunch of, um, uh, input, all of which was appropriate and needs to be considered. Um, I didn't get any official documentation back from anybody, but I think Ken indicated that he had.
I got, yeah.
Some hard up on it and, uh.
I thought we were going to do it like we did the.
Yeah.
Zoning and go down through it and.
Yeah, I, I think we would, we could possibly be here yet at eleven o'clock if we tried to eat that elephant here in this meeting. I would like to schedule a workshop to go through the health and sanitation, um, ti, you know, section title five or whatever it is. Just like we did the, the zoning ordinance.
That worked fairly well.
Yeah, they had, and, uh.
That way we can hash things out.
Or the chain, you weren't going to add anything, you weren't going to add the trash back into this, or was this?
Well.
Was that all you took out of the original, was just the trash?
Tell you the truth, I, I sent out the draft in December, and I've slept a few times since then, and, um, so I wouldn't trust myself to say yes. That's the only thing I took out from the original. Uh, however, I think it, it's necessary, and this is one of the reasons why I think we need the workshop. I think it's necessary to put something in there about trash collection, even if we're not ready to do a franchise thing and select one, one, uh, hauler and stuff like that. Um, because the first thing that the code enforcement officer is going to be sent out to do is to deal with at least two properties that I know firsthand where people are piling trash up, one in their front yards and their.
I think, I think they fail on what's in it right here, so.
Yeah, but if you specifically talk about illegal dumping, you know, I, I think there needs to be some verbiage in there about mandatory.
I mean, but you have a section on maintaining unsanitary conditions.
Well, there's one, there's one person that burns their trash too instead of, uh, having.
Well, there's a burning section in here.
That's not legal.
What's not legal?
Burning.
Burn barrels.
Well, I tell you what, that, that burning is out of control, I mean.
Anyway.
I have no objection.
We, yeah. Well, I think that's why I want to have a workshop, so that we can hammer it out. Do we want to put it in? Do we want to leave it out for now? What do we want, what do we want in there?
Uh, I, you know, in going over what you gave us, that's a lot to swallow and chew on. Uh, and I, I, it, it addresses a lot of issues.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the, the fact that you don't have mandatory trash pickup starts the problems that you're, you're talking about, because if they had trash pickup, they wouldn't be throwing it out the front door.
Yeah, but that's why we want, he wants to have a workshop.
Yeah, so when we get to, let's just, let's just say we covered it on the agenda by saying we're going to have a workshop.
Okay.
Everybody needs to come to the workshop with their thoughts and ideas, and when we get to scheduling, we will schedule that workshop.
Shit.
That'll give me a little more time to think about it too.
They would literally be here in the midnight.
Okay, um, next thing on the agenda is the council vote on proceeding with the road project at the increased cost. Uh, just in summary and for the record, um, what we had budgeted for was a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar project where the state would, uh, pay three hundred thousand and we would pay, um, two hundred and fifty thousand. The, um, they, uh, the state, RDOT, has already bid the project. They've already reviewed the bids, and the lowest bid was six hundred and seven thousand. And, um, it didn't surprise the guy from RDOT at all. He said with the prices, um, you know, going up on asphalt and stuff, that he expected it to go up. Um, we, Wes, at least Wes and I have looked at the, um, at the, um, cash flow. Um, the way this project will unfold, according to my contact at RDOT, is that, um, by now, um, the, the department manager at RDOT has probably already approved the bid. Um, and passed it down to whoever at the state does the billing. So sometime in early February, within the first two weeks of February, we will get a bill from the state for six hundred and seven thousand dollars. We, he said if we can, if we can pay them at the time or before the end of February, if we can pay them two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the three hundred and six that we would hold, that that would be sufficient for them to go ahead and release the contractor. And then hopefully by April, we would be able to, um, pay the rest. It will probably require the transfer from the, well, it will require the transfer from the, uh, reserve fund, but that's okay, we'd have enough money to pay the reserve fund back by the end of the year. So, given that, given the fact that we're going to be getting that money from the county, you know, that, you know, that will help a lot to cover the, the overage in cost. So we can still do it, we can still, uh, you know, we don't have to scale back the project. I did ask about scaling back the project, and he said they have done that, but they don't like to do it because, um, the contractors start to lose interest in bidding on jobs. If you scale back too much after they put the effort in to put together the bid package and make them rebid it. And he said the other option would be to just not release our project in the first wave, to rebid the whole thing or reject all the bids, in other words, and rebid the whole project again in late April. Um, but he couldn't guarantee that we could get a contractor lined up then by the end of the year. So I probably wouldn't get the job done either.
He shouldn't probably go a bit more.
Yeah, so what I would like, what I would like is a motion from the council to approve going forward with the project at the higher.
I make a motion, we go forward with the paving gun project, I mean, it's, we waited so long.
Ken made a motion that we move forward with the paving project at the higher bid of two, six hundred and seven thousand. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded it. Now, discussion?
What assurance do we have that we are going to get the grant? Do we have a letter of commitment?
Yes.
You have one filed?
I have a letter on file.
Okay.
That says the branch has been awarded.
And is there a timing on when they're going to? And is there a timing on when they're going to send the money for the grant?
The only thing I don't know yet is, he, he and I talked about when we will send them money.
Right.
And at the end of that, we're gonna be sitting there with an invoice.
Exactly.
For 300,000 dollars.
For money we don't have.
For money we don't have.
Right.
I, I, I'm sure there's a mechanism, but I.
Okay.
I need to ask him how that invoice gets, gets closed out then.
That's my concern of, I thought when we're not permitted to spend money we don't have.
Right.
And I thought we were not permitted to commit to spending money we don't have.
Right.
So we're admitting to spending 307,000 we don't have, the balance, the 300,000 we don't have. We have a letter of intent.
No, the, the letter that I got, and I can get you a copy of it, but the letter that I have clearly states that the state is committing 300,000 dollars to this project.
Okay, all right, I, I just wanted to be sure that we're within the requirements of committing the funds we don't have.
And our commitment is met by our fund balance of 254,000 plus, like, the tax money, I mean, can be pledged against it that we're getting from the county.
I don't have a concern about our part of it, it's the balance.
Okay, any other discussion?
That's the basis of the whole program.
All in favor?
Another question, do you have a copy of the engineering standard that they're gonna put the road down to, is it an improvement over what we have? Are they gonna put down a bigger base, it's gonna be more compaction and the paving's gonna be thicker?
How much asphalt?
Yeah, just curious.
I have, I have the, the documentation supporting the engineer's estimate, which is basically a two-inch overlay, and he has the dimensions of the streets, the linear feet and width, and, and there's a notation about some road-based work that needs to be done.
That's what I realized, okay.
But that's a good point, I need to request the, a copy of, of the bid package.
There you go.
Cause that would define the scope of work.
Okay.
It's, it's important that we know what is, what to expect of the contractor.
Yeah, it was important to me to know that it's the same or better than what we've been putting down.
It's, it's the same or better.
Okay.
And, and this project is being managed from start to finish by the state, by RDOT, by engineers that only do this for a living.
Sure.
And, so all we have to do is stand back and watch. They will supervise the job, they will supervise the work being done, they will make the payments to the contractor.
For the record and for the audience, can you name the streets again?
Hawk Drive from, in, in its entirety, from Eagle Drive to Wild Turkey, Hawk Lane, the little 150 feet or whatever that connects Hawk Drive to Holiday Island Drive, and two sections of State Line Drive between the four-way stop and, and the northern city limits.
The parts that weren't done on State Line before?
There was, there was two sections that haven't, that weren't done, you know, in the first two phases of repaving State.
All the way to County Lane, really.
All the way to County Line Road, so when this project is done, State Line will be completely resurfaced within the last three years from the four-way stop all the way to the State Line. I wish we could have afforded to include from the four-way down to Woodsdale, but that would have been another 100,000 dollars probably, cause that's in pretty bad shape too, but the next thing we're gonna talk about, I want, I wanna get another grant application in like, you know, this, before summer. And my recommendation is going to be the la, the last stretch of State Line Drive and all of Woodsdale, cause if you walk across the street here to the parking lot across the way over there, the asphalt is, on Woodsdale is really in pretty bad shape. It's not potholes, but the asphalt is peeling away and chipping away and bits and pieces, so it's becoming very porous and.
I think some of the people out here, you know, they're always complaining about the roads being in such poor shape. One of the questions I imagine people will have is, okay, you're doing or have done all the major thoroughfares in recent history, when you, who's gonna be doing my streets, my little state streets that I live on? Is that, is HICID willing to be doing pavings at all?
I think HICID is still planning on doing, you know, chip and seal resurfacing and stuff like that, although I, I, I don't know what they're, they did budget money this year to resurface and.
For 2022?
And there was, I think, 200 dollars in CIP in the budget.
Do you, do you, I can't get my road ready this year?
You know, our, our priority, you know, has to be the main thoroughfares. I mean, people might not like it if they don't live on a thoroughfare, but we're not paving them because it runs past a golf course, we're paving it because it carries virtually 100% of the traffic in Holiday Island. Between Woodsdale Drive and State Line Drive and Holiday Island Drive, it carries 100% of the traffic through Holiday Island. And it's gotta be in good repair.
And it makes sense for the city to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, this, you know, this Woodsdale, it was paved in 1998 was the last time it was asphalt.
Once you lose a street, it's incredibly expensive to.
Well, you know, that was all done just before I went on the board and, you know, and they, they did, they did Holiday Island Drive, they did Woodsdale, they did State Line, and they ate up a pretty good chunk of money, but it's lasted over 20 years.
I don't know that we would be in line to get another grant, you know, two years back-to-back.
Oh, we need to put it in there.
The guy at RDOT did make a comment that he looked at Holiday Island and, and our population versus our miles of street, and he said that Holiday Island, they would classify Holiday Island overburdened. So he, he encouraged us to continue to apply for grant money.
Well, I mean, the worst thing that can happen is you get turned down and, but then you put it back in to get next year.
Right. Okay, we did vote on that, right?
No.
All right, any further discussion?
We, yeah, we, we made a motion, but we didn't.
We have.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, we're good. Update status on building permitting and code enforcement. We, we've issued two building permits now, so we have revenue. I think it's about 1,200 dollars in revenue so far.
But we have expenses tied to those.
Huh?
We have expenses tied to those.
Yeah, half of it's ours.
Okay.
And, but at least four more building permit requests queued up that will be, you know, the builders are gathering their documentation. That process seems to be going well, except for the fact that all the files were stolen, and so where they used to be able to go to the file and pull out the original plot plan from somebody's property and, and look at the easements and look at where the house is gonna be located and all that kind of stuff, none of that exists anymore. And what we've been seeing, what the two builders have brought in, doing the best they know how to do it at this point in time, is, you know, going online, basically going to the, to the plot plans on the HICID website that are, where the lot is, you know, like three-eighths of an inch square, blowing that up to eight and a half by 11 size, so all you have is fuzzy lines and no numbers, and drawing in what they're gonna do, you know, kind of freehanding in what they're gonna do, and then, you know, just handwriting in their own dimensions and everything else. And, you know, for lack of anything else, and because, you know, they, you know, they need to keep moving with their projects, we've accepted that and we've issued two building permits. But in actuality, what they need to be coming to the building inspector with is a survey, since we don't have the plot plans on file, they, they need a survey of their property and a professionally drawn footprint of where that building is gonna be on that property with a stamp that says, you know, I'm a licensed engineer or a licensed surveyor or something that says that these are bona fide numbers. And it's gonna put a, a lot more burden on the builders and on the property owners. And that is the message that I need to get out to all the property owners in, in the letter that the district will be sending out.
Do you have a date when they're gonna send out the assessment letter?
Last week of February.
Last week?
So it, it's not as quick as I would like, but, but it's not like we get, you know, 50 building permits a week or anything like that, you know. What, what we're dealing with right now is a backlog that built up during December when, when Mickey and his people couldn't issue permits.
Can this also go into the HICID newsletter and be a weekly recurring announcement?
Well, yes, and, and I have, I haven't been as, as point-blank about it, you know, as far as the bullet point goes, but we had been running things in the newsletter that said that you need to get an application off the website and the application lists everything you need, and that's on the list, so.
I don't know if they're rerunning that or not, but I know what was in there.
Carrie said she was gonna run it for a couple of weeks.
Dan?
So.
Two questions, one, was there a police report filed on those missing files?
Yes, and Mickey was followed up with, with the, with Aaron today, and.
Did they, were, were there dates where they knew they were there and dates when they knew there wasn't, it wasn't there? Have they established the dates?
Mickey would know what those dates are. I, the, the investigation was not on anywhere, according to Aaron, and so Mickey was gonna call Sheriff Ross and tell him that this is not a trivial little issue, they need to be investigating, the trail is now cold and they need to start interviewing some people.
See, that, that was the point I was getting to, I think once they start interviewing some people and get the trail gets warm, I think they may be linked to, they'll get some answers.
It's, it's impacting us, but it's not, it's not our problem really.
Well, it is.
Well, we're living with the, we're living with the fallout from the problem.
Yeah.
But it's not our, you know, it's, it's not my place to call Sheriff Ross and say, you need to find those files, you know, the planning commission, the old planning commission filed the complaint, they need to follow up on them.
I know you, you told us, probably all of us individually about that, but we have a listening audience that I don't think has ever been heard of in a council meeting before.
As far as the files being missing?
So you mean the, the photocopies of maps that I have of the lots on our street that shows the dimensions and easement lines and everything, is the only record there is right now?
Probably. The, the, the short history is, when the planning commission got to the office, got to their office to hold their regular meeting on the first Friday of December, their room that they were, that they thought that they were renting and, or leasing, was empty, with the exception of the conference table and a computer cabinet and the computer. Everything else was gone, all the file cabinets were gone, the copy machines were gone, the, the maps from the, off the wall were gone, everything was gone. And so they called the sheriff's department, sheriff's department came and they filed a report, and they subsequently found out that the new owner of the building, and we're not gonna name names here, but the new owner of the building was apparently wanted to show the prop, show that building to a potential new tenant, or show that space to a potential new tenant, so he moved everything out into a different room in the building. And once they got a key, but at the time, that new owner was not in town, so they did get a key to get into the other rooms when they, and they found the file cabinets and they found everything except any documentation. All of the files, file cabinets were empty, and I mean, this is ten very large file cabinets that were full from top to bottom, from front to back, with every construction record for Holiday Island going back to 1970.
All the historical records of the planning commission?
Everything, 50 years.
Community architecture.
51 years of history gone in a flash. And so, so we moved everything down here that, that was, that we could find, and the new owner of the building says that the file cabinets were empty already when he came in to move them, and that's where it stands. We have one day when the, when one person says the files were already missing, and another day that kind of establishes, I don't know when the, I guess the, I guess there, there is no date that I'm aware of, Mickey probably knows the last day that they.
Time frame in between.
Yeah, but they're in and out of that office more frequently than their standard meetings, so Mickey probably knows. Mickey probably knows the last time when they actually saw the physical files. They put a value of 100,000 dollars on those files, and so it's not petty theft, I think that's grand larceny in legal terms, and so they need, the sheriff's department needs to be trying to find them. We can survive without them, the, the real burden gets put on the property owners, cause now they'll have to, more than likely, if they don't have a survey of their own already on file in their whole file cabinet, they'll probably have to pay 200 dollars to get a survey done to establish where their property lines are, so that the contractor can go out there and measure back from that property line and say, this is where the house can be, and then put a drawing on paper accordingly.
I was telling Lynn the other, not pretty recently, but apparently the courthouse in Eureka has a set of files of all the property records out here too, probably county records, and a lot of, a lot of those may have some deed or title documents that show a plot map.
It's, yeah, they may have a plot map, but they wouldn't have.
Not, not a survey.
They wouldn't have the survey, you know, showing where the, you know, the.
Those plot maps do have, have dimensions on them and they can give you a copy on eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper.
Dan, to your point about the burden of the property owners, I would suspect there will be more than there is now of people doing projects without obtaining permits, and I know.
And I know you're the interim building inspector, but, or, I mean, I don't want to put war on you, but are you gonna be driving around seeing if people are putting stuff up? And, and, or when, when you hire a new building inspector, that'd be part of his job description?
How often, how often are you on patrol?
Yeah.
Well, I, I know, but I mean, y'all know that there's stuff going on as we speak.
We see it every day.
Every day. I mean, it's incumbent upon all of us if we see stuff.
I think, I think the answer to that is, yes, they will do some driving around, but the real, the real, you know, we, we need, we need lots of eyes and ears.
Yeah, I mean, talking about, you know, if they're gonna have to get a survey and if they come to apply for a building permit and they told this, one of the documentations they have to have, and they will never come back, then I think we ought, somebody ought to make a note of that and, you know, go check and make sure they just start building.
Well, any, anytime you transfer property, you know, if you, if you sell a lot or a house or, you know, you have to have a survey?
Not necessarily with me.
No. I bought mine without a survey.
I, I bought my, that, that extra lot I bought, I did do a survey.
I did, I bought my extra lot, they did neither, bought it from individuals.
I've never, I've owned, I don't even, I've lost count of how many houses I've owned in my life. I've never had a survey done.
Well, I guess it depends on what the financing is or whatever, because there are.
It might be that, or there might be a perceived violation of someone's property line that, you know, this guy's built his driveway on my property and he needs a survey.
I don't know, but every time you, you, you pretty well tell when a house went up for sale because you'd see blue or red stakes.
I'm, I'm thinking of my house in, in Oklahoma, that that might have been part of the covenant that would, if it, to get a survey, anyway, for that very reason.
I think it's very likely that people would buy a lot out here without a survey and, and think they're buying a different lot than what they're actually buying. That they, they buy a lot off of, you know, off of somebody, and they look on the map and they say, oh, that's the third lot down from, from this house or something like that. And they pace it off and they don't realize that they're not really looking at their lot.
I don't know, I have a, you know, a survey drawing of my lot.
We bought our lot.
Good for you. If you ever change the footprint of your house, you're $200 ahead of everybody else.
We bought our lot from the developer and had no survey, and we never knew where the beds were.
Anyway.
But we had to have a survey before they would build a house.
We did, when we bought our two lots from National Educational Companies. Okay, I'm admitting I'm a sucker. But when we bought our two lots on Holiday Island Drive, it, it was staked out. They, they had, they had it staked, but they were just wooden stakes, they weren't the metal pins. And, but from, you know, from the deeds and the plot maps and everything else, I think they were staked out pretty accurately. The, it, look for, look for power poles and utility boxes, they're usually on the property line.
I, I could tell you a story. I, you know, I had a cabin up in Illinois, and I don't, I don't remember what part of the lot it was about, but anyway, we finally had to have a survey, and the survey line, line went right down the middle, the middle of my next door neighbor's garage. So I, I sold him five feet or 10 feet.
He probably, he could have probably claimed adverse possession and taken it away from you. I, I would bet that the pins are in the ground out here for most of them.
They are. I found, I found eight of them.
Yeah, 'cause when we, when we built the Starlight Trail, we needed to know exactly where Hy-Sid's right away, where the boundaries were of Hy-Sid's right away, because we built a parking lot there and we wanted to make sure we were on Hy-Sid property. And I got a metal detector from Dan at the water department, went out there and I found, I found the pins, both of them. So they were this far under the dirt that I found them.
Wow.
We've got all, all of ours, except for one that's underneath the transformer, so.
And my one corner is right in the middle of the water meter, so the pins probably were pulled. But that's where the surveyor found them, the corner of my lot, right in the middle of the water meter.
All right. So under code enforcement, well, under building permitting and code enforcement, you know, we have put the word out that we're looking for, to fill those two positions. And I've had quite a bit of interest.
How are the interviews going?
I haven't interviewed anybody yet. But I have a, I have a note, I have a log of who's expressing interest. And when we get to the point of interviewing, I, you know, I'll probably ask for one or two volunteers to help interview, but the, I have two, two interested parties that have, for the building inspector job, that have home inspector licenses, which is far different from a building inspector, but it's something, you know, it's a step in the right direction. And, and, and I have yet to figure out how, I can find out the answer real easy, I just need to call a building inspector, but you can't find out on the internet how to become licensed as a building inspector. I, I've, I've put several hours into trying to figure it out. And there is no, no government website that says, building inspector, this is, these are the requirements, this who, this is who issues the license and.
What about the licensing hero? What do they base it on?
I don't know.
They have to have some basis.
You, you have to pass an electrical test and a plumbing test and a, and a gas plumbing test. I know that.
Who, who issues the license?
That's a good question.
Gotta be the state.
That's a real good question. And I have it in my phone.
We'll change one of the ads to say, if you can answer this question.
You're an inspector.
I started out every day with calling one of the local building inspectors on my front burner, and then it gets pushed to the back burner. So I can call, what's his name, Billy Ray or Bobby Ray?
Bobby Ray. Eureka.
In Eureka Springs. He's the licensed inspector, we know the guy in Green Forest. I, all I need to do is call one of those guys and say, how did you go about getting your license? Because that's what everybody asks me.
Copy of his license would show who issued it. A copy of his license would show who issued it.
So.
I would think it would be a state.
Ask them, we know it's not.
Yeah, what I've, what I've been told by a couple of other mayors is that, well, they, they go down and they, they go to a seminar about plumbing and then they take a test. And, but, but I, I did read enough about the electrical. They do talk about electrical, building, building inspectors for electrical in some of the state statutes on licensing electricians. But it, it's, they're talking about licensing electricians, but, but in there, they talk about, you know, electrical building inspectors, and there's two different kinds, there's residential and commercial. But, but all it does is mention them. It doesn't say, you know, these are all the requirements and this is how we get licensed. So anyway, we do have applicants, we have interested parties in the code enforcement officer also. So I think, I think it's gonna be very, very, very unlikely that we're going to get somebody that is a licensed building inspector to apply for the job. So, so we'll probably start out with somebody that will issue building permits but not issue occupancy permits. You know, they'll know enough about construction to be able to go out and make sure that they have the rebar in the, you know, in the footings before they pour the concrete and stuff like that. But it'll probably be sometime before we get them licensed to the point where they can actually do inspections and issue building permits, or maybe just as importantly, issue stop order, stop work orders if it's not code. All right, any questions on that? All right, then moving on to public comments.
Oh, come on.
From our public, council member comments? All right, scheduling. I do want, this will be in February, February. City Council will be, on February 15th.
15th?
How about having a, a workshop then on the 1st?
On when?
February?
Tuesday, the 1st.
1st of February?
Yeah, that's a suggestion. I don't really have much of anything in my calendar for the first couple of weeks of February.
I have a doctor's appointment in the afternoon. I have a doctor's appointment in the afternoon.
That doesn't need to be, I would like to have it in the first week so that if we can hammer it out, then maybe we could have an ordinance ready by the council.
How about Thursday?
How about Wednesday? Wednesday, nothing ever happens.
Nothing happens on Wednesday?
I didn't put wheels and wheels in here.
Oh, it might be that.
No, it's second week, pretty sure.
I've got that to do on my calendar.
I don't know, I got it marked on my calendar, right?
February 2nd?
Uh, no. Can you, oh, oh, that's Wednesday. Oh, okay.
At 1:00?
What, what do you settle on?
February 2, 1:00?
Um, I don't, I've got that on my calendar at home, but I don't know.
Meals.
Yeah.
Well, it'll be, it'll be a squeeze to get, you know, by 1:00 you should be almost done with your route, if not, or if you finish.
Yeah, I get done about 12:15.
Yeah, so 1:00, fine, if meals and bills is not accounted for.
All right, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
No, we have to have a, oh, we already did the regular meeting, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the regular meeting is 2:15.
Okay.
And, and, uh, we've got the planning commission next week, right? The 24th?
Yeah, 25th. 25th.
25th?
25th, 24, I got it marked.
And our city council on 15th is 6:00 PM, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now on the agenda, you were talking about a workshop to establish 22 volts.
We did that.
We did that.
That was, that was old.
That was a workshop on January 13th.
That's the one.
January 13th.
Sure, he wasn't here for that.
Maybe I didn't get that deleted from my.
Our Meals on Wheels week is the 7th, you're allowed. The Meals on Wheels is the week of the.
The next week.
February 2nd.
You're right. So we're safe.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Linda made a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn, second in the motion, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?